Good evening, directors and the public. Thank you so much for having us talk about this again this evening on our final bond recommendation and recap. So this presentation is the same presentation that I gave you all last time during your August work session. So I will go through it fairly quickly, but I do want to make sure that, again, that we have a complete recording for our public in terms of the challenges that we're facing and the recommendation that we're making and why. So again, an overview of our challenges. We have a $300 million backlog from capital investments. The capital investments that we need to make into our school buildings are taxpayer assets, and that continues to grow by an average of 35 million a year. Taxpayer dollars are being expended on temporary measures. I know one of our citizens brought up that we approved some boilers and chillers tonight on the consent agenda, and we did indeed, and it is because the Board of Education decided to set aside $20 million of our very limited one-time reserves fund in order to fund those emergency needs that could actually shut down a school. But 20 million is a very small dent in a $300 million backlog. And we will continue to have to address overcrowding with mobile classrooms and boundary changes in existing neighborhoods, which will end up moving children further away from their own neighborhoods. I did add, Director Meek asked a really good question at our last meeting. Our school facilities are used for community purposes, so some of that was mentioned tonight, for about 47,000 hours per year. So our community spends $47,000 per year in our school buildings outside of school hours and school activities to use our public schools. And again, our big challenge, we have several, but one of our big challenges is a lack of schools in newer communities. This circle on the top represents Highlands Ranch. We have 38,000 homes in Highlands Ranch and 18 neighborhood elementary schools. In Sterling Ranch, which is pictured on the left, that is west of Highlands Ranch, you can see it's very geographically separate from Highlands Ranch. We have enough children in Sterling Ranch today to fill two elementary schools, and all of those kids are being bused to the edges of Highlands Ranch or to Roxborough and are having significantly long bus rides. And you can see we have similar challenges over on the east side to Ridgate. By the time you program in stops, that is another one-hour bus ride for our little kindies. How do new schools get built? We often get asked, why do developers not build new schools? The way the law works in the state of Colorado is our developers do dedicate land for public school use as well as for park use, and they do that under law. It's based on student generation, the number of acres. Sometimes, in some of our jurisdictions, the developers also contribute an impact fee per unit that is expected to be built. That impact fee is about $750 to $1,200 per unit. And just to give you an idea of scale, in Sterling Ranch, which is about 20% built out, and again, already enough kids to fill two elementary schools, that impact fee has raised so far $3 million. A new elementary school is a $50 million proposition, so $3 million might handle the parking lot, but will not build the school. Our county supported seven bonds from 1984 to 2006 in order to build the neighborhood schools that we have, and the last neighborhood school we built was in 2010. We also have to explain to our taxpayers that we are indeed also dealing with areas of declining enrollment. It is not fiscally responsible to have flat enrollment and be opening new schools, but not looking at consolidations in areas where we have significant declining enrollment. So as you know from our last board meeting, we are working on that process side by side with all of you and our Highlands Ranch community in looking at the elementary schools and how many students used to be across 18 buildings versus how many are today. We are proposing, as part of the bond proposal, a $20 million investment in Highlands Ranch to ensure that our students in Highlands Ranch continue to have the amazing opportunities that our district has to offer, just like students that might move to Sterling Ranch or Ridgate would have. We never want opportunities for kids to be limited by where they live or where they go to school. A little bit about a background on bonds in Douglas County School District. So I want to start with what is a bond and how does it work? So a bond is when we ask the taxpayers for permission to take out debt on their behalf, and then the taxpayers, through a tax rate, pay for that bond payment or that mortgage payment for those bonds moving forward. Over time, we are often able to restructure our debt so that new debt can fill in and keep our tax rate the same while maintaining a payment that is higher. For our citizens, it is similar to your mortgage. So our citizens might spend money on a mortgage to take out a mortgage for their home. They're paying a mortgage payment, and then maybe after 15 years, they have to invest in their home in order to keep the equity by redoing their landscaping, finishing the basement, replacing critical units, whatever the case might be. And so they may restructure their debts so that they could have a lower debt payment, but then they take out a HELOC loan in order to do the capital investments they need to do, and they end up with the same mortgage payment. So now they have the same mortgage payment, but they have a home with a finished basement or whatever it might be. Bonds work in a very similar way. As we sunset debt, we can add new debt and keep the tax rate the same, as one of our public commenters talked about tonight. This shows a 25-year history of bond approvals and the impact on the tax rate that is used to collect for our debt payments. I could have gone all the way back to 1984, so this starts at 1997, but really from 1984 to about 2006, the Douglas County voters supported debt approximately every three to four years. That's why we have schools. And the rate that we needed to collect on that debt was 15 mils. Because we went so long without further taking out debt in order to invest in our taxpayers' assets, the mil rate ratcheted from 15 mils down to what is now 5 mils. And so if we were to ask for a $490 million bond, that would keep us at 5 mils, and I will address that when we get closer to the proposal. This is just a historical capital investment in the metro area, just to give our citizens and the Board of Education an idea of how other school districts are investing in their capital assets. DCSD, of course, is significantly larger than some of these other districts that have invested significantly more dollars. A little background on the master capital plan. The Long Range Planning Committee works on a master capital plan every year. That master capital plan contains to excruciating detail every single improvement that is needed in every single building throughout the entire school district now and in the future, as well as looking at the new construction needs that are throughout our school district. The Board of Education approves that plan every year, and what we need to make sure we have is a financial plan to be able to meet the needs in that master capital plan. And so this just gives you an idea of how that master capital plan breaks down. And again, we need to be thinking forward and thinking about how we will be able to achieve all of the needs in the master capital plan. The needs are very, very significant. One of our public commenters asked, can you find other ways to fund the master capital plan? And I just want to give you some general numbers. If we were to try to address the capital needs in the master capital plan using our operational dollars, we would have to cut the district's operational expenses by 34% for the next five years. Those are massive numbers, and it would involve massive, massive reductions in student programming as well as significant school closures in order to make 34% in reductions. And it means that we would be essentially, instead of operating at our per pupil revenue, our state per pupil revenue is approximately $11,000 per year. 34% in cuts would mean that we would need to be able to operate for about $7,500 per year, and that is just not sustainable to educate our 62,000 students. All right. We do need to make sure we have a debt plan that can eventually have a debt plan that can keep our mil rate flat and allow us to take out debt on a relatively regular basis to continue to invest in the taxpayers' assets. I have shown a couple of plans with that to you all in the past. 5 mils is not sufficient, but it will be sufficient for the time being. All right. So here is staff's proposal. We are proposing a $490 million bond to be put on the November 2024 ballot, and it would cover the following things. And I do want to actually talk about each of these items and go to the highlights. So for anybody watching this presentation, you can click on any of the links to the right and see the explicit detail behind each of the items on the left. In the highlights, we are talking about two new elementary schools, one in Sterling Ranch and one in Ridgate. Those are the two areas where proximity to elementary is the biggest challenge that we have. There just are not elementary schools within a reasonable driving distance of either Sterling Ranch or Ridgate. An expansion of Sierra Middle School in Parker. Sierra Middle School is an extremely old building, over 40 years, I believe. It's an extremely old building, and it needs an expansion and some additions. For example, did you know Sierra Middle School is still on Well Water? They're not even on City Water. And so we need to get Sierra Middle School on City Water and expand so that we can absorb the growth in the Parker area. We would look at expanding career and technical education programming, and especially for our students that might not be immediately college-bound. We have a very, very large demand for career and technical education programming, and as much as we have focused on that, there are still programs that have tremendous waitlists. And so those programs would include construction, HVAC, electrical, carpentry, electric vehicle maintenance, advanced manufacturing. We currently offer cosmetology in Highlands Ranch, but students on the east side of I-25 have a really hard time getting there in the middle of the day. So we would offer cosmetology at Douglas County High School on the east side of I-25. Likewise, automotive is currently offered on the west side of I-25, but we do not have automotive, excuse me, it's currently offered on the east side and we do not have it on the west side. So we would put automotive in Highlands Ranch High School. We would also expand special education programming to include career and technical-based education, additional center-based programming, finishing out Parkland Phase II in order to accommodate more of our students, transportation improvements for our students with special needs, as well as playground accessibility. And then we also have programming expansion for growth and decline, which I talked about, that $20 million investment in our Highlands Ranch community. And of course, capital renewal and replacement for critical Tier 1 and Tier 2 maintenance. The bond would basically bridge us from the 2018 bond and get us to the year 2026 in terms of critical Tier 1 and Tier 2 needs. Anything that isn't critical is not really included in the bond. It's not big enough. And then I included some of the artist's renderings, the architectural renderings of what could potentially be our new schools or expansions. So this one is Sterling Ranch Elementary. There are many more details in the agenda item, but I picked some of the really nice pictures to give people an idea. And what we tried to do is design the schools to the site so that it's very cost-efficient in terms of adapting to the site at hand, and we tried to make sure that while they are modern, very modern buildings, much more than we were able to build in 2010, they also have kind of that Douglas County School District look to them on the outside so that they are easily identified as Douglas County School District schools. This one is a rendering of Ridgate Elementary. And then Legacy Phase II. And again, you can see more details in the agenda item, but electric vehicle maintenance is an incredibly innovative thing for us to be able to offer to our students, and it will put our students in incredible demand out in the marketplace because not many school districts are offering electrical vehicle maintenance, and that is something that is up and coming. And then this is the Sierra Middle School expansion, or a picture of the Sierra Middle School expansion. And I see Director Geiger smiling, and it makes me smile too, because Sierra is one of our very, very, very old buildings, and just to have it feel more modern for the students would be amazing. Okay. And then this is my graph, but now we've added a $490 million bond proposal. And as talked about, that $490 million bond proposal will keep our tax rate at 5.2 mils, our bond redemption rate. And so, in other words, we can keep the same mortgage payment but take on additional debt due to restructuring the debt, which is a very fiscally responsible thing to do for our taxpayers as well as investing in our taxpayers' assets. Now, I do have a note here that looking to the future, as we have to continue to invest in our taxpayer assets, a future bond election would very likely or almost definitely include some kind of tax increase because 5.2 mils is not sustainable over time in terms of our ability to continue to invest in our buildings. But for now, we can outrun a $490 million bond and remain in that same tax rate. This is the proposed ballot language, and I think there were some questions last time, so I want to provide some clarity. The very first sentence of the ballot language is, "Without imposing any new tax," this is essentially a continuation, it is, a continuation of existing taxes so that we can continue to have the ability to pay debt. So it really is a continuation of existing taxes, and it is actually quite analogous to the initiative by the commissioners to continue the investment in parks and recreation by continuing an existing tax. We're asking to continue an existing tax so that we can continue to invest in school Student impacts if a bond is not passed. Certainly continued growth in our new communities will mean that our students in our new communities will continue to flood the outer edge of our existing communities, and as those existing schools on the outer edges get completely filled up with students from the new communities, the students that reside near those existing neighborhood schools would eventually have to be rebounded further into Highlands Ranch, and so on and so forth as the growth continues so that we will end up having kids that pass two neighborhood schools to get to their assigned neighborhood school because we're trying to keep from too much overcrowding in those outer regions. Right now, those outer-region schools do have mobile classrooms, and we are maxing those out to where we can't really continue to accommodate growth in that fashion. Transportation will continue to be impacted. It's not really well-known, but part of our transportation challenge is all the additional routes that we have to add due to growth, and because there aren't schools within proximity of those students, they are new routes when they wouldn't otherwise necessarily be transportation routes. In terms of our backlog, the 2018 bond covered the most urgent Tier 1 and Tier 2 needs through 2021. We are once again quite a ways behind in our capital needs, and so we've had needs identified through 2028, and this bond would take us through about 2026. But if it doesn't pass, we will have to continue to set aside one-time reserves for those absolute emergency situations until our reserves are depleted. The ability to provide safe and adequate educational spaces for our students, which we know research shows is critical to learning, will be compromised. The financial impacts should a bond not pass. Every time we put off capital improvements and new buildings, et cetera, inflation is a significant factor of the entire bond package. Inflation, every year that we wait, it costs about $45 to $50 million for each year. Increasing the backlog means that we are expending taxpayer dollars on one-time expenses that we would not otherwise be spending them on if we had our things up to date. We spend about $1 million a year moving mobiles, and you can see some other things listed here as well. Temporary building systems, we would not be paying for temporary building systems if we had the ability to replace HVAC units and boilers and those sorts of things. Increase in operational maintenance. And of course, if we have to close a school temporarily and put our students somewhere else, that cost would likely be astronomical if it's even possible at all. And then this is the tax impact. If we do not put a bond and pass a bond, the tax impact would be that the tax rate would go from 5.2, it would ratchet all the way down to 3.8. This means that any future investments that need to be made in our schools and in building new schools, et cetera, would mean a significant tax increase to our taxpayers. It's really easy to let taxes go down, and it's really hard to bring them back up, as you can see from our free fall from 15 mils. And then finally, these are just next steps, so here we are tonight. Tonight, we have put in front of you a resolution to place a $490 million bond on the ballot. That is your next action item, should you choose to do that. And then an approval of the proposed bond plan. And so that resolution has the bond plan attached to the back of it. I will say, in full transparency, there is a caveat regarding the bond plan that priorities of capital needs can change. So if there's an emergency, we planned to fix A, but suddenly B breaks, and B is actually a higher priority than A, we might make some shifts, but we would do that with the oversight of the Mil Bond Oversight Committee. And then finally, of course, we recommend extending the charter for the Mil Bond Oversight Citizens Committee should a bond initiative be successful. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions that the Board of Education might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Myers?
Thank you, as usual. I think I dream some of these slides.
Me too.
I think if our public listened as much as we did, they would know what was going on. But I have two questions. I don't even remember the first one right now. But I've heard out in the public, and I think it goes back, and you don't have to bring it up, Mr. Blair, but Slide 17, it's listed out where all the money's going to go to. And so there's always that comment out there about, yeah, how are you held accountable that that money's going to go to where you say it's going to go? So what holds you accountable?
Thank you very much for that question. Ultimately, the Board of Education, of course, is accountable, but by having a Mil Bond Oversight Committee, essentially the way that the Mil Bond Oversight Committee works is that every time the staff makes bond expenditures in accordance with the bond plan, we bring those bond expenditures to the Mil Bond Oversight Committee, and then they verify that, yes, the money is going where we said it would go, the money is following the bond plan. So if you can picture the Mil Bond Oversight Committee having our detailed bond plan, and as you said, every single one of these items is completely broken out, and they've got it like a big checklist, right? Check, we've spent that. Check, we've spent that over the course of about four years. It will take us about four to four and a half years to fully expend all of the $490 million on the improvements that are in the detailed bond plan. I also would like to address the 2018 bond. I think that was brought up at public comment tonight. The Bond Mil, I don't know why I'm getting stuck on MBOC. Can I just say MBOC? MBOC, Mil Bond Oversight Committee, last time I'm going to say it. The MBOC looked at the 2018 expenditures and tracked along with those as the 2018 bond expenditures were spent, and that Citizens Committee came to this Board of Education not too long ago to talk about the 2018 bond being closed out and that every dollar went where it was intended to go.
And my last question concerns, we had one of our public commenter tonight talk about the charter schools. And I know that some of us have visited charter schools, and they aren't all brand-new, and they do need some. So can you tell me, and I'm sorry, maybe let the public know, why the charter schools are in our bond package?
Absolutely, yes. Thank you for that question. The same criteria were applied to, well, actually, a higher level of criteria, but in terms of age of the building, the same criteria were applied to our charter schools when considering their capital needs that were applied to our neighborhood schools. And I believe that is schools that were built in 2009 and earlier. As I mentioned, our last neighborhood school was built in 2010. So any charter schools built after that are indeed newer buildings and are not part of this bond package because they don't meet the age requirements. The second requirement, that is a higher requirement than our neighborhood schools have, is that whatever improvement is made to a charter school, in theory, we have to be able to go take it back, just in theory. So for example, if we replace a roof unit, you know, in theory, we could go pick up the roof unit and take it back. And so that is a requirement in order to qualify for bond dollars. Our charter schools, as the citizen mentioned, $14 million are attributed to our charter schools. That is less than 3%. It's 2.8% of the overall bond amount. Our charter schools do house 24% of all of our students here in Douglas County. And 2.8% is the percentage of the bond they are getting for their own capital needs. And then finally, there was a question about the charter schools getting some capital needs dollars from the state. They do get a small amount of capital needs dollars from the state of Colorado. That was designed because charter schools, in order to build a building, they take on their own debt, and they pay their own mortgage payments. So they don't have the taxpayers paying their mortgage payment the way that the district has the taxpayers paying our mortgage payment. And so even with that capital construction stipend that they receive from the state of Colorado, they're still about 15% less funded as a result of paying a mortgage payment. And again, they account for about 2.8% of the overall bond. That was a really good question.
Director Thompson?
So thank you again for the presentation. I think this topic is really heavy and difficult to digest, and you guys have done a really great job at making it something that's easy to understand and follow along. So thank you for that. And I know you've been saying it a lot, so you've definitely got a lot of practice in, but I do find that your presentations are extremely helpful.
Thank you.
And also, I want to thank our citizens that have given public comments, or written us emails, both in support or with their concerns. One, it helps us identify what those concerns are and where our gaps are still in information. And I really appreciate Director Myers elevating some of those concerns tonight so you had an opportunity to address them. So I just wanted to state that all the way around. So thank you. And I really enjoyed seeing the renderings. It's helpful for me. I'm a visual person. And so for anybody who's watching, I think that there's more pictures in the agenda, and I think that that's really helpful. I know it is for me. And then finally, I just want to elevate one of the public comments about auditorium seating. So when we think about updating a facility, yeah, it's going to look more aesthetically pleasing, it might be more functional, right? Maybe safety concerns are being addressed. But the person tonight brought up accessibility, and I think that's also another really important thing that we need to discuss, is just how this improves accessibility for our students. So thank you.
Thank you.
Director Weininger?
Yes, agreed. Thank you so much for all the months and months of work that you've put into this presentation to get us to where we're at, you and your staff. And thank you for also addressing public commenters' questions, because I had some of those, and you covered basically all of them. A big one that I just want to reemphasize is someone says, why are we putting this on the ballot? And they just don't trust that no new tax portion. And I understand that, and I think you answered that very well, in that even though it's not increasing your taxes, it's extending a tax, and we still have to go to the voters to get that approved. And then you also gave a dollar amount to the mil decreasing, which I appreciated, which is $73 a year for the average home, which is at $780,000 if I read your small print right. I think $73, a decrease in taxes if we don't pass this. It's worth it to me to get our schools and the capital needs addressed. And I do believe, just like the Fiscal Oversight Committee put out in their memo, that this is the best use of our funds. This is fiscally responsible to do a bond for our schools and for our students in those buildings. So just want to say that. And then a random question I had was just, you mentioned Sierra Middle School needs to go from well to city water, and I was just curious why that's better to go to city water?
Thank you for that question. Well Water is, especially for a large facility like that, is incredibly unreliable and often backs up. So I'm going to- So I'm going to let that sit there for a minute. And the, but the transfer to city water will be significantly more reliable, and we couldn't increase the student count at Sierra Middle School, which is about to happen. The well water won't be able to handle the increase in fixtures that are needed for that increase student count due to all the growth that we are seeing in the Parker area. So even if we wanted to try to get by with well, we literally couldn't as we put more students into Sierra Middle School. So we will have to make the move to city water, but it will make going to school and working at Sierra Middle School significantly more pleasant.
Yes, thank you. I can imagine what kids flush down the toilet there, so, thank you.
Director Geiger?
Well, I think probably this is about the 282nd time you and I have discussed something along these lines from the time that I've been working on this. I'm going to ask you just a series of leading questions where I know the answers, but I want the district to hear them. Do you believe, as a superintendent with years of experience, that our failure to meet our capital needs is beginning to impact, or potentially impact, the performance of our students?
Yes, and it will very much impact the performance of our students. Their learning environment is incredibly critical to their ability to learn. So yes.
Isn't it true that there are stats that just show that even an increase in three degrees of temperature average across a year can result in decreases in testing?
I have seen similar stats to that, yes.
Do you believe that our failure to reinvest in capital needs to this date has impacted our ability to adequately meet all of our safety and security needs? Let me ask, let me ask it better. Would increased funding more enable us to meet safety and security needs in a modern fashion?
Yes, increased funding will absolutely help us ensure safety and security on a continual basis, because the infrastructure that we put in place for safety and security, like any other infrastructure, has to be updated. Old equipment has to be replaced with new equipment, and all of those things are critical to continue to maintain and to increase the level of safety and security in our buildings.
And isn't it also true that much of the funding, or a good portion of the funding for the charter schools is helping them to update their safety and security and their communication process with our safety and security people?
Yes, this bond does include safety and security upgrades for all of our schools that will help improve communications, among other things, and those things are all critical, and that includes our charter schools as well as our district-run schools.
One of our deepest and most important duties is to serve our students with disabilities and provide them with appropriate special education programs. Do you think that this bond would greatly increase our ability to provide for those students?
Yes, thank you for that question. As Director Thompson said, accessibility is part of this bond, including ADA updates, not only to our buildings, but also to our playgrounds that will make them more accessible for all of our students.
Do you believe it'll also assist us in providing better resources for our special education students?
Correct.
Thank you. Do you have any doubt, having traveled this county from Highlands Ranch to Franktown, from Sterling Ranch to Ridgate to Albert County, that there is a broad community support for investing in our schools?
Yes. I believe that the district and the Board of Education and our community's efforts over the last three years have continued to build on the education of our community and the understanding and mutual understanding with the school district of the significant needs of the school district and how those needs can be addressed. And so I think that is why we have seen a progressive increase in support. In November, of course, the bond came in about 48%. In March, the polling showed about 54% to 56% support. In July, the polling showed about 60% support. And I do believe that is because our community is starting to really pay attention to our schools and to understand the needs that our schools have, and that we actually do not have the revenue in order to meet those needs without having debt in order to invest in our balance sheet.
And finally, do you believe that the district has learned lessons from the expenditures of the 2018 bond that will help how we administer a 2024 bond even more efficient, appropriate, and accessible?
Actually, I'm really glad you asked that question, because again, we did hear some public comment around the 2018 bond. When the 2018 bond was developed, it was not developed with a very, very specific bond plan. It was sort of generally developed from the master capital plan-ish, but there wasn't really necessarily a direct line. I would say the biggest lesson that we learned from that 2018 experience is that you will find the amount of specificity in the proposed 2024 bond is significantly higher than that in the 2018 bond, and that we did break off a separate bond plan so that, so that the MBOC can go through literally a checklist and say, yep, we've spent that. Yep, we spent that. So it is very, very specific by having an isolated bond plan, which did not exist in 2018.
Thank you. Thank all of your staff for all of the work that's been done. This is, the work you have done over the last year is impressive, important, and serves the highest needs of this district. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you might be an attorney. Director Moore?
I will echo all the comments from all the other board members, for the staff and the citizens who've put a lot of work into helping us identify all the needs and the best approach to try to get these problems solved. And so I don't need to recover that. But the question about the charter school, the only question I just want clarity on, and again, I'm looking at the breakdown of what the $14 million that's earmarked for charters under the capital improvement part, is, there is not a single item on here that's a luxury item. Everything is HVAC, plumbing, lighting, communication, safety and security. Yeah, this is all, seems like very basic need stuff. That said, what is the rationale behind why we would include charter schools in this versus to just let them handle these on their own?
Thank you for that question. The rationale truly is that they are all our kids. Our kids attend, all of our kids that attend public schools in Douglas County School District should be able to attend safe and adequate facilities, and they are all our kids. Their families are taxpayers, just like our neighborhood school families are taxpayers. But from a district lens, we consider our larger umbrella to include all of our amazing neighborhood schools, our amazing magnet schools, and our public charter schools. They're all part of our system. They're all part of our Douglas County School District family.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no other, we will move on to, no, I already, I already asked. Item number 26, the consideration of resolution to approve the bond plan.
Mr. Blair, could I ask you to put the resolution up on the screen? Thank you. Oh, you're way ahead of me, sorry. I asked too late. Thank you, or too soon, or something.
And with your permission, President Williams, I think I might be more helpful to you, sitting over here and answering questions than standing in front of you?
That's great.
All right, terrific. Thank you.
All right. I think Director Meek had, has a question about this.
Sure. I appreciate the resolution. I thought there was one topic that could be added as a whereas statement, so I'll go ahead and read it. Whereas, the proposed 490 million bond will be funded without imposing any new taxes, ensuring that the tax revenues that have already been approved will not increase for residents, while still providing the necessary resources to update and expand our school facilities, enhance safety, and support educational excellence across the district. I felt like that topic was not covered in the resolution, and I really appreciated the visual in the prior presentation. There's actually a slide that helps to explain this, this key concept. So I thought it would be a great addition to add this whereas statement.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
You mean in the bond plan resolution or the bond, putting the bond on the ballot resolution?
I was thinking it fit within the, this agenda item, which is...
The bond plan.
The bond plan.
Mm-hmm. Do you think it fits better in the other resolution?
That would be my only comment. I think approving the bond plan says how we're going to spend it, and I think approving the, putting it on the ballot says why and how much it's going to cost. I like the language. I just think it's in the resolution in '27, not '26.
Or both.
Or both. There's no reason it can't be in both.
Is there any issue from the district's perspective?
No, we do not have an issue with that whereas statement. Director Meek did put that by legal in advance, so we thank her for that, so we were able to look at it. Thank you.
Great. So you would want to add that to both, or just the second, or just the first?
I think it's appropriate in both.
I think both.
Okay, can you read it one more time, Director Meek?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I can.
And then if you could send it, yeah, but read it, please.
Sure. Whereas, comma, the proposed $490 million bond will be funded without imposing any new taxes, comma, ensuring that the tax revenues that have already been approved will not increase for residents, while still providing the necessary resources to update and expand our school facilities, comma, enhance safety, comma, and support educational excellence across the district.
Forgive me, President Williams. I spoke a little too soon. So yes, this is very appropriate to put in the resolution Director Meek proposed putting it in, which is the item 26, resolution to approve the bond plan. However, staff does not recommend putting it in item 27, because item 27 is not intended to be a statement as much as it is just in order to put the language on the ballot for the election purposes. So it really is item 26 where the board has the flexibility to be able to make such statements. I hope that's helpful.
Yes, thank you.
I move to adopt the resolution to approve the bond plan as amended by proposed by Director Meek.
Second. Motion by Geiger, seconded by Weiniger. Roll call. Geiger?
Aye.
Meek?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Weiniger?
Aye.
Passes seven to zero. And then moving on to item number 27, the consideration of resolution to place a bond issue on the November 5th, 2024 ballot for a 10-minute discussion amongst board members. So I will open it up. Director Geiger?
I, I move to adopt the resolution as written. I'm sorry, this is emotional to me. Thank you for all the work.
I'll second that, too. Okay, motion by Geiger, seconded by Weiniger. Still open for discussion. Director Myers?
I just had a couple of things I did want to say. I have always been a proponent that we let our community, we the people, make the decision about, even if we, this is a third year in a row, that we do put it on the ballot. And I also want to kind of give a scenario about my years in the district. When I started in '97, in January of 1999, we moved into brand-new Ranch View Middle School. So today, it's what, 25 years old? And I can remember back when they discussed, you know, every 10 years, we're going to get a new renovation, a new look. And that started not to happen because we weren't approving the bonds, and we had, we, every summer, I remember, because I was there working usually in the summer, and the staff that was doing everything to make it appear that we were getting renovations, that new paint jobs, just anything that we could do. And I do remember teachers being there, painting their own rooms, and having to do some things themselves, and even paying for their own paint and doing some of those renovations. And actually, my, my husband and I built our house, moved in in December of '99, so we all know the elation of moving into a new school building and a new home. And I know with the experience of running our home, which we are still in, that there are times when it's lean and we have to take out some money to pay for some things in our home. And then there's other times when it's much better and we can pay cash for renovations to our home. And I just know, I'm, my husband and I are in that group that we're retired, we're on fixed income. And I think I can maybe speak for Director Moore, Director Geiger, Director Meek and I. Our kids went through the system, our kids, and they're now all grown adults, and they have these beautiful buildings. And we want to retain our teachers, and yeah, we do need some of our things done. We don't want Mr. Cosgrove, and I've been in the car with him, when he has to find a bigger Band-Aid to put on something, because that's the way it needs to be fixed. And so now, and I think I'm the only one of the four of us, I have grandchildren now in Douglas County, and I want them to go to the same type, be in the safe building, go to schools that are renovated, fixed when they need to be. And so that's what I want to say about the bond.
Director Thompson?
Thank you again, Director Myers, for your comments. I agree with you. I think that it's the most fiscally responsible thing for us to do is to present to the community our funding needs and present it with a well-vetted solution. And I think that that is what this is, is a well-vetted solution to needs that we're presenting to our community to help us address. So, thank you.
Director Moore?
Yes, real quick, I think it would be irresponsible and highly imprudent not to maintain and improve when it comes to the basic operating systems of all the assets that the school district owns. Nobody loves being taxed for things they think aren't necessary, and myself included in that. But when you look at the big picture of what passing a bond is for, how it's approved and how it's paid back in the timeframe it's done, and the purpose it's used for, it doesn't, you could hate taxes all you want, and I do, but this is almost a no-brainer when it comes to necessary and prudent. So I just want to make crystal clear that as much as I side with and identify with all those out there who want to ensure the government spends its money wisely, this one is, would be irresponsible to not do, in my opinion. So, thanks.
Director Geiger?
I do want to say thank you to everybody who commented, to the number of people who emailed me with support for this. I want to thank every committee, FOC, LRPC, who've contributed to this, DAC, of course, which has had a great deal of impact. I want to thank the community members. Mr. Allen and I have not always agreed on tax policy, but I appreciate his insightful and intelligent comments tonight. I see my old friend and rival, Mr. Jones, in the hallway, and I know he will do what is necessary to help this district in the future. I see Ms. Gilstrap, who has put time and blood into promoting this. It demonstrates the needs of this district and how much we have to have this. Mr., Director Moore is 100% correct. Mr., Director Moore is 100% correct. We would not be doing our job if we did not preserve what we have and expand what we need. And the idea that we are going to teach kids to fix electric vehicles and that we are going to teach them skills and abilities is one of the great improvements that this district has made over the last 10 years, and it is turning out even better citizens than we have. We have to invest in making them the best people they can be, and we can do it for a reasonable price at the right time. We have to pass this bond, and I am proud to be here today supporting it.
All right, I can't see Director Meek, so I don't know if you have anything that you would like to add, but in the meantime, I will...
Sure.
Oh, Director Meek, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I would definitely like to thank all of the staff, especially Superintendent Kane, for creating such an effective presentation outlining the needs. I'd like to thank our MBOC and all of our committees, our citizen committees, who've dedicated so much time and effort into thoroughly reviewing how funds have been spent in the past, bond funds, and also looking at the needs. The polling that we have done, you know, I'm trying to look at the reasons people hesitate to support the bond. I think it's mostly uncertainty about how funds will be allocated, wanting more information, economic concerns, and just experiences, mixed experiences with passports. When you think about those, we, I believe the district has done a really effective job at creating a bond plan that is transparent, it's on the website, and having citizens come together to, the ambassadors, to talk about the need and everything. And what I would do is encourage anyone that still has questions around the need and how funds would be spent to definitely reach out and, you know, talk with us. And we will do our best as elected officials to try to answer all the questions that our community has. And I think we are well situated for success, given, given all of the work that has been done over the past several years. Just a big thank you to everyone.
All right, well, that leaves me, I suppose.
All right, so I recall very, very vividly our retreat in December last year after the bond failed for the second time. And I said that night that, or that day, that I was going to struggle putting this on for the third time. And there were a few reasons for that, and one was I didn't feel like we had made a lot of progress on growth and decline, which I think we have made a lot of progress on growth and decline. And I think that we are showing our community that we are committed to making sure that we are serving the needs of each community. So I will say that this, this one has been the one that has kept me up at night for, I mean, in the three years that I've sat on the board, this is the one, because it was a struggle. But at the end of the day, when I ran to sit in this seat, I said I was going to do what was best for kids every time. And so I think I would be doing a disservice by not putting this on the ballot this year. And so I wish the campaign a tremendous amount of luck and support, any way that I can help there. But I, at the end of the day, this is what's right and best for kids. So, with that, I will take it to a vote. Geiger.
Aye.
Meek.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Williams, aye. Weiniger.
Aye.
Passes seven to zero.